Okay, I'm almost there. Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Trinity County Planning Commission Regular Meeting, February 23rd, 2023 at 6:00 PM at the Trinity County Library Conference Room. If you'll all join me for the pledge, we'll get the meeting started.
I have pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cool. At this time, I'd like to call to order. We open with public comment. During the public comment period, members of the public may address the Planning Commission on any matter not listed on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Is there anybody here in the lobby that would like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Tom Belanco, Douglas City. Welcome to our new Commissioner. My comments kind of got to do with building, but because planning is really the only entity here, I think you might be the appropriate... I'm asking you to volunteer for something. Some time ago, maybe 10 years ago, either through its own wisdom or necessity or inertia, I don't know, the board created the Building Department Appeals Panel. It's in Section 15.04.200 of the Trinity County Code under Building. To the best of my knowledge, that panel, that board has never been constituted. It's supposed to... For instance, if we have a problem with a planning decision, we can appeal to this body and then to the Board of Supervisors. That board was supposed to function that way for building. And it's got various qualifications and the members are supposed to represent each district and be appointed by a supervisor. It seems like if we ever need that body, and not because I don't think we have capable people in our building department, but if people didn't disagree from time to time, I wouldn't have a job. I think this body could probably serve that function rather than constituting this other board that maybe we need or maybe we don't. But just maybe in your conversations with the board or staff, I'm just putting that bug out there, that I think this body's worked hard on a new building ordinance, the limited density rural dwelling. That may cause some questions to come up. It'd be useful, I think, for that and a myriad other issues to have a Building Department Appeals Panel. So maybe it could be you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else on the floor that would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public comment period. In lieu of Mr. Blanco's comments, can staff look that ordinance up and maybe get back to this on the next commission meeting?
Yeah, we can do that.
Thanks, Carla. Okay, with that, we're going to move to regular calendar, which is our rotation for Chair and Vice Chair. So with that, we have a memorandum. And I think we're going to change things up a bit from how we did it last time after consulting with county council. For this rotation, we're going to go to a vote, which seems to be what the 1989-05 ordinance framework provided. Do you want to elaborate on that, Ms. Fisher?
Thank you, Planning Chair Commissioners, Skylar Fisher, Associate Planner. So we basically... Trinity County has two documents to provide guidance on the Planning Commission. So first, we have Trinity County Code, Chapter 2.36, and we also have Planning Commission Resolution 05. And in some aspects, the two are in conflict with each other. So, for example, the resolution outlines a rotation schedule for the Chair, whereas the ordinance states that Vice Chair and Chair should be appointed by election. So for... Staff wasn't really sure how to proceed because recently, we've been trying to follow the rotation schedule, and we really didn't want to make it so any district was mis... or underrepresented. So we reached out to county council to provide... to get direction on which we should follow and how we should handle the changing of the Chair this year. And so the direction that we got was to follow the ordinance first, so in this case, to go by election. But in all other aspects where the resolution speaks to something that the ordinance doesn't otherwise, that we can follow the resolution. So, for example, the resolution... the ordinance talks about having Planning Commission meetings, but then the resolution further explains that we should have like at least two a month. So things like that is where we fall to the ordinance. And so Debbie did some research on which districts have been represented over the past few years. So we provided a table on which district has been Chair and which has been Vice Chair to help form a decision for this.
Thank you for that. Do members of the Commission have any questions for staff?
No.
Is there any public comment on this? Please state your name for the record.
Of course. Bella Headkey, Weaverville. I just wanted to add to this discussion, as I've seen many Chairs switch, that it's really important to remember length of experience on the board because that can lend towards a more productive environment when we go through projects. And I don't mean that at any personal level. It's just a pattern that I've noticed. I wanted to point that out.
Thank you for that. Is there any other comments on the floor? Any comments from Zoom? All right, thank you. At this time, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the Commission for discussion. I have a question for staff. How is this election going to be ran?
So it is at the discretion of the Planning Commission. We could do a straw poll, or it could be by motion. So somebody could suggest who the preferred Chair or Vice Chair is based on discussion, or somebody could make a motion and then discussion can follow that.
Commissioners, is there any ideas or comments on this?
Chair Sharp, I'd just like to mention something that, in the interest of structure, I think that exact reason that you're asking about is why they... basically, the rotation exists to begin with. So it's your guys' pleasure and how you want to do it. And that's what I wanted to be, you know, first and foremost, was that it be your decision on how you represent.
How do you Commissioners feel about this? Do you think we should do straw polls? I don't know, a vote handwritten? I mean...
Well, I'm not scared to say who I would think would be a good position for the Chair. I don't mind saying it publicly.
Good.
That's Rory.
Yes. It was Commissioner Barrett, yes.
That's correct.
For you guys on Zoom tonight, when you talk, could you please state who you are, just so the public knows who's talking?
So Todd and Rory have been on longer than I have, so I would like to hear kind of any thoughts they might have.
Thank you, Carol, for asking. It's funny you brought up Todd. To go back to Bella's explanation, I think Todd would be an excellent choice for Chair, and I think you would be an excellent choice for Vice Chair. I think experience is something we should lean on. And I think if you go back through the calendar that was provided, District 3 was last represented in 2021. I came on in May of 2021, and it was swapped over to the Vice Chair because it was deemed unacceptable for someone with less experience to take the Chair. So it seems to me that District 3 has fallen... I don't believe it's necessarily getting its opportunity to be spoken or to be heard. And with that said, I think Chair should be Todd Heaton, and Vice Chair should be Carol Fall.
Does Mr. Heaton have any thoughts on this?
My personal opinion is, is I really don't want it, but it was like... But it's like, I guess I need to grow probably, and so I could probably... If y'all want me to be the Chair, I'm willing to be the Chair. Do I have to pay $50 to every Commissioner like you do in Monopoly if you become... with your elected Chairman of the Board? That's my concern.
Yes.
Oh, man. Nope, don't want it.
Thanks for those comments, Todd. Well, I, you know, I have...
Chair and Commissioners, if I may?
Yes.
I'm Rocky, Recording Secretary. In 2024, now Todd, Commissioner Heaton is District 5, Commissioner Barrett is District 3. And in 2024, we have, according to the rotation schedule, we have District 1 and District 5 for Chair and Vice Chair. Coming in for next year. And then after that would be 5 and 3 for 2025, if that helps with any of your planning.
So just so I'm clear on that, it would be District 5, Heaton, in 2024 as Chair, 2024.
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair. And Barrett as Chair in 2024. District 3.
District 1. Or just in 20... There's actually one of these I mailed to all of you. There's one in that packets I left you there now. The 2023... To rotation would be District 4 for Chair and District 1 for Vice Chair. And based on the concerns of experience, unless Commissioner Ellis has something he's hiding from us. Some of your previous discussions had led to, you know, choosing one of the other Commissioners, Commissioner Fall, Heaton, or Barrett for Chair and then Vice Chair. And according to the ordinance, you know, electing somebody is perfectly acceptable also.
Sure. So, thank you for that. I'm going to, well... I'm going to vote that we make Carol Fall Chair and Commissioner Heaton Vice Chair for 2023.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion. Do we make a motion during a vote? Is it a motion? Yeah, I don't even know. I don't think so.
Yeah. Most of this has always been...
Rotation.
Ahead of time and not in...
So I'm just going to vote. It won't be a motion. I'm going to... that is my vote to make Commissioner Heaton Vice Chair, Commissioner Fall Chair for 2023, if they both are so inclined to accept.
Okay, and my vote is the opposite. I think Commissioner Heaton should be the Chair based solely on experience and time served on the Board. And Vice Chair should be Commissioner Fall. I believe she is a wealth of knowledge and an asset, but I don't believe her experience would benefit or behoove the Commission. So I'm going to lean on seniority. And I think Commissioner Fall has some stuff to learn. But again, she is a wealth of knowledge and an absolute asset on the Board.
Do we vote? Can they vote for themselves? How does that work?
New territory.
Great.
And the guy that knows nothing, does he vote?
Yes, you would vote. You don't have a choice.
I have no choice. All right. Well, it obviously, the two people that have been selected, it's not an argument...
Can you get closer to your microphone?
Oh, yes, microphones. I'm going to learn that part. So since the two candidates that have said yes, obviously, are the two that should be in those two positions, I guess for me, it's the toss of the coin. And Todd, I haven't met you personally, so I know nothing about you. And so don't take anything personal that I say. But I think that I will vote for Carol Fall as Chair and Todd Heaton as Vice Chair.
Would you accept that nomination?
Todd, are you going to charge me $50 if I vote for myself?
No, ma'am, I won't.
With all respect to Rory, I have served on several Commissions and Boards over the years, so I don't have any hesitation as far as, you know, the Browns Act or the Rosenberg's Rules of Order, or, you know, any of the, I think, duties that fall to the Chair. So I don't know if that helps.
It does. And as I said, I believe you're a wealth of knowledge and you're an absolute asset. I was just leaning on the seniority and time served. But I think you'd be excellent in the position also. But I just...
We know that.
Huh?
We know that.
Correct. Rory has more senior... sorry, that's why I asked them first what they thought, exactly.
Well, I don't think it's very becoming for me to vote myself in there. I tend to rule with an iron fist and might not be the most diplomatic in the position. I mean, my time will come, either by rotation or by vote, but I don't believe it is very professional for me to put my name forward. So I remain with Commissioner Heaton in the Chair and Commissioner Fall in the Vice Chair.
May I share a thought? My thought is that, my thought is that it's like, in reality, truth of the matter is, with Carol, she probably has more experience than what I do under all of the different boards with being the Fire Chief and all of that kind of stuff as well. And so I would probably have to say, even though, because it's like, truth of the matter is, it's like, we're all a fairly green bunch of people on the Board here. And so I'll just throw in my lot and say I'll vote for Carol as well. I appreciate the nomination, Rory, but I'll vote for Carol as well.
Thank you for that, Todd.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think we have a majority vote here, so I think we can go ahead and congratulate Ms. Fall on the Chair and welcome to it. I wish you well. I just want to say, it's been an honor to serve as Chair for Trinity County Planning Commission this year. It has had its ups and downs, but I've enjoyed every moment of it. I would encourage the people that follow me to keep that baseline of the Pledge of Allegiance before each meeting. I think it's a one thing that we can all agree on, and it gives us a baseline to build on. If we can come together in some sense before we start, which is, you know, that commitment to our Constitution and our country, that it gives us framework to work from. So I would encourage future Commissioners to keep that in place. So with that said, thank you all, and I will move my seat and welcome Ms. Carol Fall to the Commission Chair. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for, I guess, electing me Chair. I appreciate that. I will do my very, very best to fulfill those duties. So we are going to continue with the regular calendar and move to item number 2, Minutes. Approve the minutes of the January 26, 2023 regular meeting. What is the pleasure of the Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve. Pass item 2, Minutes, from January 26.
And do we have a second?
Yes.
So...
State your name, please.
I figured my accent was enough of an ID, but this is Commissioner Barrett.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Sharp, second by Commissioner Barrett. How do the Commissioners vote? All those saying aye? Aye?
We have to do roll call because of the Zoom.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Barrett, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
Aye.
Commissioner Heaton?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fall?
Aye.
Thank you, 4-0. And just so he is understanding, Commissioner Ellis isn't asked to vote because he was not at that meeting.
Correct.
Okay, then, moving on in the regular calendar to item 3, Housing Element Program 1.1, 25-foot height limit review. Staff presentation of the existing multiple-family residential R3 district height limit. This review is part of Program 1.1/2/8 of the Trinity County 2019-2024 housing element. Location, countywide. Planner, M. Wexler.
Good evening. For all those who have not met me, I am Joe Wexler, the Assistant Planner for the County, and I will be presenting this staff report on height limits for R3, the zone, of course. So let's get to the reason for this. In 2019, the Trinity County Housing Element Update effectively said in Program 1.1 that we... there is a need to review the height limits for this. It states, "As part of the program, the County will review and amend its development standards if the 25-foot height limit in the R3 zone and lack of permitted by right uses in the R2 zone are constraints to the development of multifamily housing." One major concern that we have here at the County, of course, is making sure that all of the local developers and all of the local landowners are able to get through the projects they would like efficiently and in as timely a manner as possible. And unfortunately, due to this being 2019 that this passed, this 2020 and 2021 kind of set forward a bit of delays overall. So I have created this presentation to properly display how this height limit or how this height limit compares to other types of zoning and how it compares overall and the kind of effect it would have on the County. So as is shown in the first chart, there are many different kinds of zoning that allow for residential development, and I have included them all. And one thing that is noticed among all of them is that the height limit seems to be 40 feet consistently, except for the multifamily district, which is at a height of 25 feet. And this could prove to be an inefficiency if it is not seen that this is a more widespread practice, as I am going to delegate that into other counties similar, whether or not this is something that is common. So in order to properly understand this, research was undertaken, and other counties that are similar to Trinity County, I'm not going to say they are Trinity County because there is no other county like Trinity County, honestly. But these are ones with comparable conditions, those that are similarly of rural character and within the mountains or in the North State region. And I looked over all of them to see what they did in order to get a greater understanding of the context. As is shown in the chart below, all of these have a bit of a higher height limit for their R3 development. These have all really shown this. But one thing that is unique about this is that one thing I measured is the recent projects average. In other words, given that these are the height limits, how often are they put into practice? How often do any new projects or developments meet this height? And so I did some research emailing each county, and they responded with any kind of average that they could find. And one thing that I found that was very unique was that only two of the counties had recent project averages regarding multifamily housing. And what was found was that with Lake County, only one of their two projects actually hit the height limit. The other was only 20 feet, making the recent project average 34 feet. According to Mendocino County, their recent projects are only of 20 to 25 feet. And for the other four counties, there were none applicable. In other words, they have not done multifamily housing projects in quite some time. And the reason I went forward with this recent project average is to really get a feeling of how this limit or how this height limit would affect the County in terms of development, whether or not we'd be putting ourselves at risk of having some level of changing the character, and whether or not we might end up doing something that would be overly consequential. So luckily, I can say that with this new height limit adjustment, there would be no real necessary effect on projects set forward, in case anybody is worried about that. And it would largely just be in paper. And the benefits of it would be, they would lead to a more consistent zoning ordinance that would make it much easier for local land developers, local landowners who want to do a little something with their land, to be able to understand the code and easily pass through it without any delay, which I think we prioritize at the County. We want to make sure that things get done as efficiently and as well as possible. So the staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors amend Section 17.18.60 of the Trinity County Code section to change the height limit from 25 feet to 40 feet, given these conditions. There are alternatives, which would include waiting until the Comprehensive zoning ordinance update to modify the height limits in the R3 district, or rather, to not amend the height limit of the R3 zoning district in total. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wexler. So very concise staff report, yes. So if you...
First time, sorry.
You're doing great. So do any of the Planning Commissioners have any technical or clarifying questions for Mr. Wexler?
I do. I'm curious who you spoke with in Shasta County.
All right, I can't remember the name specifically, but I do remember that I emailed the Planning Department for records regarding recent projects that were set forward within the unincorporated portions of the County. All of these counties listed, it's none of its municipal, nothing that would implicate a kind of standard that doesn't apply well to Trinity County. I don't remember the name, but I do remember that they mentioned that there haven't been any recent multifamily projects. I could get you the email if need be.
No, no, I'm just curious. We do a lot of work down there, so I'm aware of several projects. So just a question. It's okay.
All right, all right.
So do any other Commissioners have technical questions? Commissioners Barrett or Heaton?
No, I just wanted to say Mr. Wexler has done a outstanding job for his first presentation. Thank you. I think you covered all my thoughts and all my questions.
Oh, thank you very much. Much appreciated.
You're very welcome.
I have, I guess, a question. So in the housing element, there were 23 parcels in the county, I guess, that were zoned R3. The majority were in Weaverville. But it seemed to indicate there were also some in Hayfork or Lewiston. Do you have any idea? But it seemed to indicate there were also some in Hayfork or Lewiston. Do you have any idea how many might be in those communities?
I do not.
Okay. And do you know if, if this proposal was sent out to the fire departments for comment?
It was not sent out to the fire departments for comment, or, yeah, for comment.
Okay. Okay, so then I will close technical questions and open to public comment. So do we have any public comment in the room? Any public comments online on Zoom?
Travis?
Yes. Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Travis Perkins. I'm a resident here in Weaverville. And I would like to talk to you about, just read in the paper, one of the major concerns about the people in Weaverville and the Trinity County was the scenic views. That's what really draws people here. That's what really keeps people here. So now you're talking about raising the ceiling of some of these buildings. Some of these buildings could possibly block out some amazing views for some of our residents that have been here 30, 40 years. That's, that's really just my biggest thing is, you know, when we start building tall, we really can block out the sun for other people. And I think we need to be cautious of that when we expand and get bigger. As a community, we really need to be aware of what can really actually affect neighbors and neighborhoods. Also, like you said, Chairman Fall, the fire department will probably have a thing to say about potential building that would be, you know, three to four stories tall, could possibly be quite devastating to people. That's it. I just wanted to say thank you and have a wonderful day. I hope everybody gets home safe with the snow.
Thank you.
One more person? Ag, go ahead.
Oh, hi. Good evening, everybody. This is Abby Goodeger from Weaverville. I just want to please urge you to not vote to raise the, the building height limit this evening. It's really, you know, kind of what Travis said, makes a lot of sense. We have a lot of scenery here. There's something that you guys did last month, month before, where you approved a zoning change in a rural residential basic, base neighborhood for an R3, for somebody that has said that they have intentions to build up to 40 feet as high as they can. And, you know, that it's not appropriate for the neighborhood. It's not appropriate for the town. It's not appropriate for the area. So we please just ask that you don't raise the, the limit for R3 or for residential office and leave things as they are. And thank you for your time.
Any other comments on Zoom?
You have one? Tom Balanco, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of Commission, Tom Balanco, Douglas City. What, I just, it's almost a question that I have. It wasn't clear from the staff report. If this height restriction in R3 is subject to a variance, for instance, if somebody proposed a project and said, hey, I want to build to 40 feet and I'm not blocking out any views, is that possible? Or does it have to be done ordinance wide? If it is, I'd be in favor of, of, you know, maybe not at this time amending the ordinance, but allowing the variance to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Balanco. Mr. Wexler, if you could answer that question?
Well, I don't think it was entirely clear to me. So the question was about the variance, the variance regarding which project?
So I think the question is, if someone wanted currently to build at a higher, higher than 25 feet, could they do that by variance rather than by changing the ordinance?
I, I do not believe I know the answer to that question. Yeah.
Ms. Headkey, do you have something to contribute?
Yes, somebody could get a variance from the existing height limit.
Okay.
If granted by the planning commission.
Okay, so there's not an absolute prohibition if they wanted to request a higher height limit?
Correct.
Thank you. And any more comments on Zoom?
You'd have to state your name.
Bella Headkey, Weaverville. You know, there's a degree that I might be incorrect, but I just wanted to bring it up for the discussion that I remember reading a section in the general provisions and exceptions section about height. And when there is like, it's over a certain height level, then you can, you have an avenue, avenue through a use permit. So that kind of strange, but you get what I mean, that there may be a possibility. And I don't, I don't know if apartments are like allowed by right or if they're allowed by use permit. But something to consider.
Thank you, Ms. Headkey. Is there any more public comments? Okay, so I am going to close public comments and bring it back to the commission. So what is the pleasure of the commission? Would anyone care to make a motion for discussion purposes?
I'll make a motion. I recommend that the Board of Supervisors amend Section 17.18.060 of the Trinity County Code section to change the height limit from 25 feet, but not to 40 feet, but to 45 feet on R3. And I have reasons for that, but I'll save that for discussion.
Do we have a second for discussion purposes?
Well, I can't believe I'm saying it, but I think I agree with Mr. Sharp, and I'll give it a second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Sharp, second by Commissioner Barrett.
So for discussion purposes, if we're gonna, you know, with this, I think I, you know, I would fall to, before this could be an actual amendment, that we would absolutely have to get the okay from local fire departments to make sure that they actually had trucks that could reach these elevations. I gotta believe that they do, considering that all the other heights are at 40 feet. So for residences, so this is the only one that's kind of the outlier. My point to bringing it to 45 feet, and the reason that you see all the other jurisdictions at 45 feet is for simple building matters. When you build in between floors, you lose a foot for every floor you go up. So it doesn't make sense to go to 40 feet because you still would be stuck at a two-story build. If you go to 45 feet, that leaves you enough room in between floors for framing, subfloors, insulation, and then of course your roof structure on top of that, which is why they have it at 45 feet. So if we're gonna move it up, it, it seems to me that it would be to 45 feet to allow that third story. I would make the argument, and I do agree with the comments that Travis and Abby spoke about, which is view shed. I, I do agree with that, but we do live in deep canyon areas. And we live in a county that is extremely limited on space to build. We do not have enough build, buildable land as it is to accommodate the people that want to live here. Let alone, you know, having the ability to develop new land. There is no new land. It's all state, it's all federal. So I think we really need to think about this hard and try to maximize the, the ability to grow up a little bit, not exceed crazy heights. I don't think 45 feet is, is in, you know, a height that is unobtainable and is going to affect too many people's view sheds. But the reality is, is that we have to leave room in our county to grow. If we don't grow, we will die. So there has to be those thoughts, and it can't be just about what we feel like right now, but what is the future for our county? So that's my comments on my motion.
Thank you. So any other discussion or comments from other commissioners? Commissioners Barrett and Heaton?
Commissioner Barrett, I would have to say Bill spoke very eloquently, uncovered all the bases. I think he spoke complete factual information and I think he hit the nail right on the head, and we need to allow for development for people to live here. There's no more land being made, so if we have to go up a little bit, then so be it. Well said, Bill.
Thanks, Rick.
So.
I would like, oh, sorry, but I, I would like to say exactly what Rory said there. And so I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of this here as well. And I want you to know that if I, y'all are breaking up with the snow and the internet, stuff like that, so I might be slow on responding.
And thank you. That was Commissioner Heaton. So I'm gonna put my fire hat on for a minute. So Weaverville has a ladder truck. And so they can reach these higher stories. So it's correct that the current ordinances allow the single-family homes and duplexes to be 40 feet. My concern is this would be a multifamily structure. So you could have a bunch of apartments rather than just two homes in a duplex. You could have a bunch of apartments with no way to reach those higher floors outside of Weaverville. And that's why I asked how many of these R3 parcels are in either Lewiston or Hayfork? Because I'm concerned that neither the Lewiston or Hayfork fire departments have a ladder truck. And so if there was a higher structure in those two communities, there would be no way, no public safety way to address that.
If, if I could just make a comment, I received a, a text from the fire chief in Hayfork, and he said they do not have that ability.
Right, yeah, I know that. Thank you. So I am wondering if you would consider continuing this item, and I agree with the 45 feet. I agree with the need for, you know, the ability for those kind of developments, but I'm wondering if we would continue this item till the first meeting in March to clarify how many parcels are in Hayfork or Lewiston that might not have that public safety protection. You know, and get comments from the Hayfork and the Lewiston fire departments if they feel comfortable with a multifamily structure in their communities that they wouldn't be able to, you know, reach.
No, I think I'm in agreement with what you're saying. I, I think we do need more information on this and more input from the fire departments. But I would suggest too that, that there has to be some thought put towards these communities and their fire departments. And, and I realize they're voluntary. I realize that, you know, there's not a lot of money out there, but you get money for these things by creating projects that bring people in to pay taxes to buy fire trucks. So you can't stop a project that promotes growth and money to buy fire trucks because you don't have fire trucks. So, you know, at some point, you got to figure out which came first, the chicken or the egg. Did, did we build a building and then buy the fire truck, or did we buy a fire truck and then build a building? You know, I suggest that they build the building, and that brings taxes and revenue, and then they buy the fire truck. But again, I'm open to anything on that. I just think that that has to be a consideration.
Well, I, I mean, a ladder truck is a very specialized fire truck. And, you know, they're $500,000 to $800,000. So if Lewiston, you know, in the housing element, you know, they're talking about there might be one or two parcels. So you couldn't justify, you know, a half million dollar fire truck with, you know, one parcel, but you are potentially putting the public at risk. So, and, and again, I'm speaking from my fire, my fire hat, because I'm, I'm like, I'm, I'm glad there's no R3 in Trinity Center because I know we would never have a fire truck, a ladder truck. Okay, so. So that would be, that would be my concern, is that we could, we, you know, my suggestion that we consider continuing this for two weeks to keep that information. And it may be that R3 would only be appropriate at 45 feet within the Weaverville area.
I don't think we have a meeting in two weeks, though. I think Deborah can speak to that.
Debbie shaking her head, okay.
The next meeting that we can notice for would be for the March 23rd meeting.
But if we, if we continue the item, we don't have to notice it.
This is true.
Right?
Correct.
So we could continue it to the March meeting, first March meeting?
Correct.
Well, I will.
Do you want to make a motion?
I will make a substitute motion that we continue this item until the March. No, March. March 9, Planning Commission meeting.
Did we have one scheduled for the night? I don't think they had one scheduled. Did we have a meeting scheduled for the night?
No, not so far.
So could we just move this to the 23rd meeting?
That would be your, your call.
Okay, I will be out of the country on the 23rd. You, well, so I will, I will.
Later.
Right.
Even.
So I, I will make a substitute motion that we continue this item to an unspecified date in order to obtain comments from the fire departments in Weaver, in Hayfork and Lewiston regarding their capacity to provide a public safety response in the event of a fire, if the, sorry, I'm not stating this correctly. I move that we continue the meeting to an unspecified date to obtain comments from the fire departments regarding their ability to provide response to a 45-foot-high building.
I'll second that motion with an amendment that we first get information on where R3 exists in the county. And then where R3 exists, get information from the fire departments in those areas that it's relevant to.
Okay. Let me see if I can restate this. I move that we continue this item to an unspecified date to obtain information where R3 parcels are located outside of Weaverville. And to obtain comments from then the relevant volunteer fire departments regarding their ability to respond to a higher elevation building.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So we'll do a roll call vote. We ready? On this, the counter motion, which was to move the item to a date uncertain to allow time to gather information on R3 parcels outside of the Weaverville area and to obtain comments from those volunteer fire departments in those areas. Commissioner Sharp, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Barrett, how do you vote?
I wish we had a chance to talk before we went to vote. But I vote no. I think it has been four years in the making, and I've had enough time to plan this out. Bill hit every nail on the head with his reasons for going ahead, and I don't think we should wait anymore. It's been four years.
Thank you. Commissioner Heaton, how do you vote?
I'll say aye.
Thank you. I have four, four to one to continue the item to a date uncertain.
Okay, thank you. That, that concludes item three of the regular agenda. We'll move on to item four. A tentative parcel map, P22-21, a request to divide a 433-acre parcel into three resulting parcels of approximately 3.61 acres, 1.29 acres. three point six one acres, one point two nine acres, and zero point eight six six acres for commercial use and a remainder parcel. Access to the project site is from State Highway three and Forest Avenue. The project site addresses, address is eight zero six zero State Highway three. Assessor's parcel number APN zero one seven dash four six zero dash zero one one. Applicant L K Hollandbeek Company Inc., Planner S. Fisher. Ms. Fisher, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Planning Chair, Commissioners, members of the public in the audience and on Zoom. My name is Skylar Fisher, Associate Planner, and I'm going to discuss item four, which is project number P twenty-two twenty-one, a tentative parcel map application. As Chair Fall has stated, this is a request to divide APN oh one seven four six oh oh one one. Taking a look at the aerial map, what is being subdivided is the existing Frontier Village Strip Mall Park. And so that's going to be that three point six one, one point twenty-nine, and zero point eighty-six acres are parceling out those businesses. One of the parcels is going to have two of them on it as shown on the, on the parcel map that was prepared by the surveyor. Now, if you look at the parcel, the tentative parcel map that was prepared, and you look at the aerial map, you'll see that there's a different description on acreage. And that kind of threw me through something. I was like, what? The remainder parcel is described as one hundred and fifty-three, but then if you look at the assessed parcel, it says it's four hundred and thirty-three. So this triggered a whole discussion with the applicant surveyor and the county surveyor for me to better understand what was going on there, which is the assessor's parcel is actually several legal parcels. So this is just subdividing one of those legal parcels in this APN. So that's why those numbers are a little bit different. Other than that, the project site is zoned as general commercial with a general plan designation of commercial. If you were to look at the zoning and the general plan designation maps, the project assessor's parcel is multiple zonings. But I figured we can just focus on what the project site zoning is. As far as surrounding land uses, they're varied. On the north, there's BLM. There is a single-family residential properties to the south and to the east and west, as well as some industrial, commercial, and vacant properties. The Frontier Village can be accessed when driving into the downtown Hayfork area. Include stores such as Hayfork Discount Grocery, Green Valley Garden and Tool Supply Garden Center, and a few other structures. Beyond the commercial development, the parcel is largely undeveloped. And existing access is from State Highway three and Forest Avenue. But one of the conditions from DOT is to remove the access from Forest Avenue or to improve it. In addition, portions of Hayfork Creek and Big Creek run through the center and northeastern corner of the parcel, but doesn't run through the project site area. Other than that, the project itself doesn't include any new development. It is just for the sake of parceling out those commercial areas to eventually sell off. Planning staff circulated the project for comment. Comments received were primarily from the Department of Transportation regarding utilities, roads, and airports, which were included as conditions of approval. Additionally to that, we received comments and the okay to go forward that the tentative parcel map is consistent with the MAP Act and local ordinance from our county surveyor. Some of her comments for aspects of the project and notations to add to the map prior to recordation were included as conditions of approval for the tentative parcel map. Additionally to that, we got one comment from the Bureau of Land Management regarding cannabis, which at the southern edge of, of the APN, but not on the legal parcel within the cannabis program. But even though it is not within what's being parceled, it's not within the designated remainder since it's on a separate legal parcel. So we don't have to worry about, so the cultivation is separate from the parcel for this project, if that makes sense.
Could you, could you point us out to where that? Chair, if I may, I'm sorry. I'm just used to be in the chair. I'm so sorry. So if I may, Chair, I'd like to speak. Quick question, the cultivation site that you're speaking of, is that the thorough of greenhouses there at the bottom left-hand corner?
Right. Yes.
Okay, so that is or isn't part of the parcel? Because it appears to be part of the overall parcel?
So it's part of what's assessed as the parcel by the assessor, but it's not part of the legal parcel for the project. So it's not included in the designated remainder.
I'm confused.
I understand. So there was a big phone call that I had with our surveyor, with the applicant surveyor, so that I could also wrap my head around this. So if you look at Attachment B, in the upper right-hand corner, there's all of these like breakdowns and lines and all sorts of things and little notes on the different areas of the assessor's parcel number. And so in that bottom, in the southern part, I should say, of the parcel, there's like a certificate of compliance number. And that shows that the parcel is a legal parcel and it's separate and covered and shown compliance to that certificate of compliance. And so.
I'm, I'm not seeing this, so maybe you could show us. Well, thank you, Mr. Hollenbeck. We'll, we'll get to you in a minute. I just want to know where you're pointing to.
So in Attachment B,
Right.
in this kind of central area is the project area. So that's one legal parcel. And then down south, this is a separate legal parcel. So this project is only doing this, is only, excuse me, subdividing a portion of the central parcel. And then the rest of this is what's going to be the remainder. But that is separate than what is evaluated within this second legal parcel.
So on Attachment F, it has nothing to do really with the lines that we're talking about? The one I held up? These lines aren't don't really show us the project parcel, correct?
So the project parcel in the location or in the aerial imagery, I call out what is being subdivided. But you can see where the project parcel itself is called out with an attachment B where it shows what is going to be subdivided and where the remainder is going to be.
So maybe you can continue with your explanation and we'll, we'll ask more technical questions as we go along.
Okay. Continuing from the comments received during the circulation period. In addition to the Bureau of Land Management's comment, there was a comment submitted by T-Pod commenting on the location of the transformer in Pole, which was noted by staff and by Caltrans stating that encroachment permit should be applied for by current adjacent property owners. So after the request for comment period, there's a discussion of the zoning code and whether or not this project is consistent with the development standards for the district. Although this doesn't propose any new development, the proposed dimensions of the parcel lines would not cause any structures to fall out of consistency with the required setback requirements of the parcels district. So it would be consistent with the zoning district. And.
Could I ask a question? What is the zoning going to be on the three new parcels?
So the zoning is going to stay the same. There's not going to be a change to the zoning and it's going, it's going to remain general commercial or C two.
Okay. And for clarification, the certificate area on the on the plot map, that's where the grow that Commissioner Sharp brought up, correct? The, the four greenhouses, if you were to take that square and place it on it, the certificate of compliance would fall over those four structures down there. Is that correct?
So there's multiple certificates of compliance on different parcels, legal parcels within this one APN. So the lowest certificate of compliance by Hayfork Creek is what covers that cultivation area. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarity's sake, the certificate of compliance is what someone would have to apply for and obtain if they were to have a remainder parcel. For example, this remainder parcel cannot be developed upon until a certificate of compliance is obtained and proves that that remainder parcel is consistent with the MAP Act and local subdivision ordinance. So the project site is located within the area of influence of the Hayfork Airport. Due to that, staff added conditions regarding development standards for the proposed parcels. There is a map attached showing the Zone D and Zone B two in proximity to the Hayfork Airport. In addition to evaluating the project with zoning consistency and with the Trinity County Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, staff also looked at the subdivision code and found that based on chapter sixteen point twelve of the subdivision ordinance, which contains the requirements for tentative parcel maps, that the tentative parcel map prepared for this minor subdivision is consistent with the standards of Title sixteen subdivision of the County Code of Ordinances. And this is in addition to the county surveyor's review and determination that this is consistent with our county subdivision ordinance and with the MAP Act. The project was also reviewed for consistency with the Trinity County General Plan. As this project isn't changing the use of, doesn't propose to change the use of the parcels. It was evaluated to see if it was consistent with the intent of the commercial general plan designation, which an excerpt is attached, which staff believes that it is consistent with the intent of the commercial general plan designation. So the final plan reviewed by staff was the Hayfork Community Plan to see if the size of the parcels or the subdivision project would be in conflict. So the November nineteenth, nineteen ninety-six adopted Hayfork Community Plan was reviewed. And it was found that there was no language which stated that there would be any concern from this project or would cause this project to be in conflict with the adopted plan. Finally, a SEQA review was performed of this project. I worked with our land use consultants, SHN, to come up with a determination on whether or not this project was exempt from SEQA. And based on my conversations with them, given the nature of the project, they found that this project could be eligible for the common sense exemption as there's no proposed development at this time. All of this being considered, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve P twenty-two twenty-one subject to the findings in Resolution twenty-three oh two, which are that, which are that this project is exempt from SEQA per the common sense exemption. And make the map findings that the tentative parcel map as conditioned is in conformance with the Trinity County General Plan Title sixteen and of the subdivision MAP Act. And also find that the map is in accordance with section sixteen point twelve point one five oh, the conditions of approval of the Trinity County Code of Ordinances and of Government Code Section six six four seven four and is complete. And additionally recommends that you find the findings that the design is consistent. Sorry, I just found an error that I referenced, the Weaverville Fire Protection District. Anywho, I recommend that you amend that section of the resolution and I'm open to any questions. Thank you.
So that would be the Hayfork Fire Protection District?
Yes.
So do we have any technical questions or clarifying questions for Skylar? Yeah, well, so this is.
All right.
So, yeah, so this is more just technical and clarifying questions and we'll save comments for discussion.
Okay, I'll make it a more of a technical.
There you go.
So it, it doesn't appear to me that anything's changed in the way of access to anything from this project along Highway three or Forest Avenue. And doesn't look like it has any effect on the community on the, on the west side of Forest Avenue. Is there anything that was a red flag to anybody regarding that in the findings that were done? Because it doesn't appear to me that there's anything that's really difficult about this.
So the only change that this project will have regarding access will be, I believe that the applicant has chosen to close off Forest Avenue based on conditions provided by the Department of Transportation. Because based on the conditions, and here, let me flip to it so I can read you the exact conditions. So I'll start with twenty-one and then I'll work backwards. So or I guess, no, I'll just, I'll just start with twelve. So the, within the conditions, within the road conditions twelve, it states that the existing encroachment onto Forest Avenue, County Road HF ten shall be removed, including the culvert pipe where it crosses the drainage, or the encroachment shall conform to Department of Transportation standards for a commercial encroachment. And the encroachment permit must be obtained for removal or improvement of the existing development. In addition to that, condition fourteen requests a hydrology study and requests that all culverts shall be eighteen eighteen feet in diameter or larger unless an alternative, no. Eighteen inches, I'm sorry. Eighteen inches in diameter or larger unless an alternative size is approved by the Director of Transportation. And ditches shall be designed and constructed to prevent a hundred-year flows from encroaching more than two feet into the travelway. Fifteen, which is all improvements required for the development and as described in these conditions of approval, shall be shown in construction drawings to be submitted to the Department of Transportation. And then sixteen and seventeen, which is the construction drawing shall be stamped by an engineer approved by the county engineer. And finally, inspection of any improvements shall be performed by Trinity County Department of Transportation staff or a county-selected inspection firm in accordance to code section, and the developer will coordinate inspections. So it's either those conditions or condition twenty-one, which is if the driveway accessing Forest Avenue is removed and removal is confirmed by DOT, the conditions I just read would not apply.
Sorry I made you go through all that.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm happy to explain anything.
Any other technical questions for Ms. Fisher? Commissioners Barrett and Heaton?
No, Commissioner Ellis covered my point, so I'm good to go.
Okay, then would the applicant care to provide a description of your project?
Scott Marison, I apologize, Mr. Sharp. I just should have had some confusion on that.
No worries. No, no need.
The Big Creek Ranch has thirteen homesteads.
If you can just speak, speak into the microphone, please. Thank you.
There's actually thirteen established homesteads from the old days. And that's why some of the confusion on these, where is this parcel and this parcel? So that kind of explains what you were asking about, why there's.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah.
I said, thanks for the clarification. It's just on the maps that they made, doesn't really show what they're talking about.
I understand, yeah, for sure. Oh shit. Anyway. Anyway, she just explained through, through twelve through to twenty-one. I made efforts with the County Road Department, Andy and another fellow. I never talked to the director, but I tried to get him to let me block that completely. It was never planned as a drive-through approach, because it was piled with dirt and they'd just drive over the top of it. I tried to get them to allow me to leave that and block with boulders. So it'd be no motorized access at all, strictly for walking or bicycles. Because the subdivision that's next door, you know, a lot of people use that access to come to the store. And my main concern was the younger children, they sent young children to the store, you know, to get some milk or whatever they need. And that access keeps those young children from getting anywhere close to Highway three. You know, and I'm talking about eight-year-old, ten-year-old kids, you know, that I couldn't convince them of, because they want a hydrology study and everything else. And the culvert that is there is bigger than the culvert that comes under Highway three Caltrans. So it'll definitely meet the flows, you know. Anyway, that's a subject, so basically, the culvert and that encroachment will go away. And so the only one left to deal with on that whole thing is thirteen. They're talking about the easement, the thirty-foot easement. The width of the and they talked about the dedication. But they're saying they have to dedicate the remainder to besides the actual parcel that we're dividing off.
So Ms. Fisher, could you explain item thirteen a little bit for us, please?
It says, if you read thirteen, it says, but at one point it says where said dedication lies within the subject property, including along the remainder.
Would you like me to elaborate on it or to, okay. So this was a condition proposed by the Department of Transportation. So sorry, I'm rereading it to re-familiarize myself with it.
It's the only one that applies because the rest, with the culvert removal, the rest of them are mute, so. By law, I'm, I'm required to give them that along the subject property, but not required to give it for the remainder. And that's, I can give you the code on that.
So.
Section six-six-four-one-one point one.
What does that say exactly?
Pardon?
What, what does that say exactly?
I don't know this.
Oh, I thought maybe you had it right there, sorry.
No, Frank Lehman, I heard Frank from Reading, probably the best surveyor officer in the country. So he's the one who explained to me that along the property, on the subject property, along there, yes, I have to designate that thirty foot off the center line. But they're asking for that to be down the remainder too. And by law, I'm not required to do that. That's about the only thing in the whole thing that, you know, most, a lot of this other stuff that's on here has already been done, I think, so.
So.
How does that affect the buildings that are there now and the, because the history of this, the location is what it is?
Pardon?
Now, well, how does, how does that setback affect the parcel? So be the parcel three that you're separating off. How does that affect the building or the use of that if you were to give them the remainder? Does it affect you negatively or just?
There's a couple ways to look at that. That's a ditch. Eight foot deep.
No, I'm just talking about, does it affect your project if that, does that remainder affect your project in a negative way? Or is it, is it worth the fight? That's my question.
Well, I didn't figure it's a fight that they say I don't have to give that
Right.
on the remainder. And just, we have the, that Forest Avenue, when you get down there by the remainder, the whole road's already on my property.
Okay.
And then we gave easement a farmer ranch. We gave them easement up there, no charge. You can't even get it off your tax rolls. We gave easements over the years, been in this community for
Right.
sixty-eight years, you know. But they're just asking for something that by, by the law, I'm not required to give them. I don't know really what the fact would be. Since it's just a big ditch, drainage ditch, what it'd be, if, if the county ever really wanted to use that property, basically, they would have to put a pipe in there and build that over the top of it.
Right.
So I'm not sure why, even on the subject property, I'm not sure exactly why they want the, because the expense of expanding the road that way would probably not be an option at all. So I just, my drink wanted me to bring that point up to you.
No, I was trying to get an understanding if it, if it affects you negatively or not. Because I don't want to mess up your project if it helps your project to not give it up.
Pardon?
It depends on how it works for you, I'm just trying to get a clarification, does it benefit you to, to keep it or does it not?
To keep the.
The easement part, the remainder.
I'd like to just explain, I don't really know. It's just, you know, that's looking at the futures, which is sometimes it's hard to see, you know, perceive, but so I really couldn't answer that, but it's just, he wanted me to know that, you knew that the, by the ordinances, whatever this is he pulled up, I'm only required to give them the dedication along the subject property.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that could be something that, like I said, I can't really think of how it would affect me down the road or how it would affect the county, really.
Well, I don't feel for one second, Mr. Merson, that you should give up any land that you don't have to. I feel you have been a, as you just listed from all of your stuff in sixty-eight years established in the community, I certainly wouldn't give up my land if I didn't have to. And if the law states that you only have to give up through the subject matter, why on earth would you give up extra land? It's just preposterous to me that it would even be asked for.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrett. So Ms. Fisher, do you have any other information to add on this Condition number thirteen?
You know this code?
So I don't know the code specifically, but I understand the concern. So that's like, kind of where like the certificate of compliance and like the difference between the remainder and the other parcels in this project come in. So I understand the purpose of the condition is to ensure that the road is up to the standards of the category, of the category five standards, as that's their requirement. But if it is the pleasure of the commission to strike, including along the remainder, then please do so.
Okay, any other technical or clarifying questions from the commissioners? Any other questions for the applicants? Thank you, Mr. Merson.
I want to ask one question. The majority of the things on here have already been complied with, right? Cal, Highway three easements from the state and I know you have the map that shows all of it.
I, I believe that there's very minimal work if we were to get approval tonight, tonight, to get from tentative parcel map to recorded parcel map, is my understanding.
The only real issue on the whole thing at this point with me is, is the encroachment, and I couldn't document to leaving that for the public safety of the people that live over there. So they'll be removed and that basically solves, as far as I know, the only hang-up on this thing. Everything else is just easements, electrical, telephone, you know, standard easements that you have to have, for sure.
Okay, thank you. So is there any public comment, not in the room, any public comment on Zoom? Okay, so I will bring it back to the commission. What?
I don't know why he's not showing up there. Tom, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Tom Belanco, Douglas City. I think we're on the right track here. Obviously, I think this project ought to be approved for the very reasons that were part of the last item as well. I also think it, I, I don't really understand why, if he's going to do away with the easement or the encroachment, why that Condition thirteen is still part of it. But to the extent that can be amended to not put a seemingly pointless burden on Mr. Merson, I think it ought to be. So I, I, I hope the commission can be creative with its approach to that remaining condition. It's unfortunate that this is the choice that's put to him. I think lots of us have driven over that encroachment, but anyway, I, I do hope you approve this and I, I would hope that you make that condition of minimal impact, if at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belanco, do we have any other public comments? So we will close public comment and bring it back to the commission. What is the commission's pleasure on this item?
I'll make a motion. I second it.
Why not?
I'm glad you're eager.
Commissioner Sharp, your motion is?
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve P dash twenty-two dash twenty-one, subject to the findings, including in the Planning Commission Resolution twenty-three dash zero-two, with the following attachments, I'm not going to read them, I'll just state the letters, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J, and striking items twelve and thirteen from the requirements. That's my motion. Okay, I second that. Now we can open it for discussion.
Yes, so we have a motion by Commissioner Sharp, second by Commissioner Ellis, discussion by the board members. Commissioner Heaton? Commissioner Barrett?
I think I've already said my part. Section thirteen should be removed. And without being removed, I believe it satisfies all the requirements. And I believe we should get this project completed tonight.
So I have a question, if we delete requirements twelve and thirteen, he would still have to do fourteen, fifteen, sixteen and seventeen unless he removes the driveway. So if you look at Condition number twenty-one, if he removes the driveway, then he doesn't have to do twelve, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
Right, and I think we should be adding thirteen to that list also.
But Commissioner Sharp's motion, if I understand correctly, deleted twelve and thirteen?
That is correct.
So if Condition twenty-one remains, I mean, if he's going to remove the driveway anyway, he wouldn't have to do twelve.
Right. That doesn't really make sense.
So, so do we just want to delete thirteen?
Yeah, I believe he's going to remove it. And, and item twenty-one, which would negate the need for all the other items, but we should add removal of thirteen.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, Mr. Mission, you had something to say about twelve?
The main condition of removing the culvert is, you know, although I wanted to leave that existence for the benefit of the shopping center, but in order to do that, the camp, they will make me do a hydrology study, even if my pipe's bigger than the one on the Caltrans, they would require a Caltrans. And when you talk about stuff like that, it's probably ten thousand dollars, even though it's really simple, team gets started.
So you would prefer to leave twelve in then? You would prefer us to leave Condition twelve in?
Yeah, it'll be gone, you know, they just didn't want to do that, but you realize what hydrology studies and stuff like that start to cost. And you're probably well aware of what our economy in Hayford is right now, since from a couple of years ago, you know. So expenses like that just put an extra burden on me, keeping my employees. I haven't laid off one employee, I'm proud of that, because they need their jobs. But our economy is, you know, in the toilet, so. So I, I don't think I have much choice, because they will, even if you want to leave it, they're going to want the hydrology study and that stuff, you know, they're not going to, I don't think they're going to let you off the hook on that, so.
Right.
I think the culvert goes and, and the whole issue.
If that works best for you, then we will agree with that. If that's what you want, that's, I'm totally agreeable.
I think that's all we'll have to do, yeah. I just, I appreciate the fact, you know, you kind of listened to what I said. But I just, I don't think you're going to get the, you end up with some kind of a battle with the road department saying, no, no, we want a hydrology study. Maybe the condition of the pipe, you know, or just a can of worms. The kids will just, they can, they can get to the store up by the highway without getting too close to Highway three. So I just, my concern was not adults, it was children.
Sure, mine as well.
And so, public safety type thing, you know, so.
Thank you. So Commissioner Sharp, do you want to clarify your motion that you're proposing to delete Condition number thirteen?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start that again. One second. So I'll make a motion to approve P dash twenty-two dash twenty-one, subject to the findings, including in the Planning Commission Resolution twenty-three dash zero-two, attachments A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J, and striking item thirteen. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, motion by Commissioner Sharp, second by Commissioner Heaton.
Could I ask a question for clarity?
Sure.
Is the motion to remove the entirety of thirteen or just the requirement of offering the dedication alongside the remainder?
I think just the, the remainder, because the one is already existing.
So you're proposing to amend Condition thirteen to strike, including along the remainder?
That's why we're discussing this, I can keep changing my mind. Yes, that is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. So I believe the motion is to amend Condition thirteen to strike the language, including along the remainder. Does the second concur, Commissioner Heaton?
Yes.
Do we need to repeat that motion then? Okay, so any further discussion about the motion on the floor?
Nope.
Okay, roll call vote?
Commissioner Heaton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharp, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Barrett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, motion approved.
Thank you, that concludes the regular calendar. We will move on to Planning Commissioner Reports. Any Planning Commissioners have anything to report? We will move on to planning commissioner reports. Any planning commissioners have anything to report?
Okay, thank you. And thank you for listening to my concerns because, but I don't think we're going to get there with the transportation. And if, if they need that remainder, they decide to pipe the ditch, I give it to them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Merson. Drive home safe. I know, worried about the summit. So any planning commissioner reports?
Yes, I do have a report. So, um, prior to this meeting, when we talked about rotation of chair, and, and what we were getting our information off was P dash eighty-nine dash zero five. But in nineteen, two thousand nineteen, the planning commission at that time had formulated, I believe it was a resolution, is that correct, Debbie? To kind of give a, a framework of how the planning commission should run. And I believe Commissioner McHugh at the time drafted this. I could be wrong, but it certainly looks like his, his writing. I think it's well-written. I think it's, it's up to date. I think it is relevant to us now and not in nineteen eighty-nine. It is my suggestion that, well, I'll share this, I'm going to pass these around. I would like to get a motion to get this on the next meeting so we can actually approve it. I think the history on this, by everything that we could tell, was this came to a planning commission meeting. It was discussed. And then the next two consecutive meetings, I believe, were canceled and, and the thing never got voted on. And I did come in to the commission shortly after this, and I know at that time, things were a bit chaotic in the planning department and, and there was a lot of changes in the commission, so I can see how this just kind of got left by the wayside and did or didn't get approved, but it seems like a very work for us to work off of, and as new commissioners and people just taking over, I think it is a good, solid document for us to read and hopefully follow and use in the future to run commission meetings. So I would hope that we could get a, a motion to put this on the agenda for the next meeting.
Would you care to, let's see, it's not agended, so we can't make it an official motion. We can make a request that it be placed on the agenda. And I would add that we would request that county council provide input as to whether or not we would actually have to amend the original ordinance for this resolution to take effect.
Well, I think the resolution P dash eighty-nine dash zero five is what we're working off already. I don't know that it's an ordinance, it's just a resolution, right?
Well, there was an, an update to the ordinance in twenty eighteen, which is number
and, and I believe the ordinance takes precedent over a resolution.
Zero, seven, zero. And I think in part of that is what led to the section of the rules for the commission. Rules, rules for the operation and conduct and conduct of business before the Trinity County Planning Commission. It had outlined in the ordinance that there needed to be these things.
So I think what we're asking is that we agendize an item essentially to resolve the procedures for changing the bylaws and, you know, elections that we discuss eliminating those conflicts moving forward. So that would be appreciated if the staff could pursue that.
Perfect. That's all I've got for reports.
So any other planning commissioner reports?
I, I have a, oh, sorry.
Commissioner Heaton, go for it.
Uh, I had some people contact me yesterday, in fact, about the, uh, repair work on the Ruth International Airport up here. That, that we have some individuals who fly into, there's several individuals who fly into the lake for the summer. And also there's people who fly in out of Oakland. It's a, a large church that owns the double A that is bordering the, um, the double A property and, but they, uh, the, there's some work that needs to be done upon our rent, on the runway there and some of the, uh, the people are very hesitant on using it and, uh, and I was just kind of wondering, what avenue do I go down to try to, uh, figure out on what we can do on that? Because I'm not sure.
So the airport maintenance is the responsibility of the Department of Transportation? So you may want to contact the director of the Department of Transportation? And you may want to ask that that item be brought before the Airport Advisory Commission?
Okay.
And I would suggest that they contact their supervisor because he can definitely help with that. She?
Okay, thank you.
He.
He, Frasier.
Remember, it's Hyam Palm that moved into District Four.
Yes.
Commissioner Heaton, Commissioner Barrett, any other planning commissioner reports? Okay, thank you. I have a brief report. I just wanted to let people know that the county has had issues with my county email. For some reason, they thought that I was no longer a planning commissioner and took away my email and when they gave it back to me, they gave me a different email address and so for a while there, I was not getting emails, so if someone was trying to contact me, I apologize, I am not ignoring you. I am just, it just went into some black hole. It seems to be working now. So that's one thing. The second thing is, so there was a presentation made to the Board of Supervisors about the changes to the Brown Act and so forth, and the rules for a Zoom meeting as far as when commissioners can, can use Zoom. Is that, does that apply to the planning commissioners?
Definitely think so. I did not actually hear that portion of the board meeting, so I can't say specifically what that was about, but I can definitely find out.
I think I would appreciate a similar presentation to the planning commission because my understanding is that there are more restrictive criteria of when a commissioner can zoom in. And so I would not want to have any of our commissioners jeopardized, you know, by not following the rules because the rules were never explained to them. So that would be, that would be great to agendize that.
I'd kind of add to that because this kind of seems to be a theme and I don't know if it's, you know, because we volunteer for this job. Well, no, we get paid. So it seems like the, the supervisors get trainings and it's a no-brainer and they have it, but it seems like we always have to ask those. And I would suggest, strongly suggest, to keep our commitment level where it is and to keep quality people in here that we get that same level of attention so that we are educated and, and don't have to ask for education, especially when it comes to doing our jobs properly. That would be very beneficial. So any kind of update that you might have on any kind of trainings that are coming up, we'll just can keep doing what we're doing. You know, get them out there for them, especially for new commissioners, you know, that can be very pivotal.
Watch it all the time, try to find stuff.
Thank you.
Fortunately, the training that was supposed to happen tomorrow got canceled in Reading. They're rescheduling it. I'm sure everybody was nervous about the weather. But yeah, I keep an eye on that and, and I do know that there has been a new version of the Brown Act, but I was not aware that our supervisors had adopted it. So yeah, we need to, I was aware, but now I know that it is and I can assist in looking into that.
Yeah, my concern is basically that the rules have also changed for Zoom meetings. You know, the criteria for when a commissioner, a supervisor, I know, can, can request to zoom in. You know, they, they can't.
And I, I didn't want to bring new packets without knowing that they had been adopted because I did read that it had to be adopted by your board before it became rule to everyone else.
Zoom criteria is a state requirement.
Okay.
It is.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so anyway, that would be appreciated. I wouldn't want us to accidentally run afoul of any of that. My last planning commissioner report is I just wanted to really welcome Commissioner Ellis and thank him for stepping up to represent District Four.
Thank you, and hopefully I will be of benefit to you guys.
I'm sure, I'm very sure, and, and welcome.
Welcome aboard, Don.
And so we'll move on then to the planning director's report.
So the only thing I really have this time around is we're going to be asking the general plan update team, the consultants, to actually give a presentation for the commission on the twenty-third of March. So it will be presented at the Board of Supervisor meeting on the ninth and then seventh, seventh, thank you. Will be presented on the seventh and then any kind of updates between then and the twenty-third will also be provided for everyone. Because I wanted to, we're about to start swinging into a new upheaval. We'll begin the out of this winter weather hopefully here soon. And then the general plan update team will be out and about again over the next few months.
Thank you. So.
Did you have anything to add? Oh.
We've received some comments asking about where the low-density rural dwelling ordinance is and it is currently being reviewed by HCD. And the representative we've been talking to said that we, they would hopefully get back to us on that within the next month or so. So there is forward progress on that, even though it kind of has been a little bit slow.
And HCD is what?
The Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Heaton, fair warning, I will be out of the country on March twenty-third, so you're going to be presiding. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, good job, Carol. Way to go. Good job.
Right, winging it here. Okay, any other further business? No, then the meeting is adjourned at seven forty-four? Thank you.